Okay. Today is Wednesday, October first, two thousand and twenty-five. It is now six oh three P. M. And today is a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've all brought us together. Thank you for the great city of West Miami. Lord, that we would be one people. Lord, thank you for the leadership. Thank you for the mayor, the commissioners, Lord, our police force, and everyone, Lord, who's working in the forefront and behind the scenes. Remind us that we are a people united under your banner. Lord, that we are made in your image. God, give us wisdom, discernment, especially in our words this evening as we discuss the issues before us. And more than anything, Lord, may we remember that we are community through and through. We thank you and we pray in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ivan Chavez Jr. Is excused this evening. Commissioner Juan Blanés. Commissioners Gustavo Cevallos.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Yuha Corom.
Thank you. Can we take items, all the minutes, A, B, C, D together unless there's a comment?
Yes. Okay. Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, special commission meeting. September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular commission meeting, tentative budget. September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special commission meeting. And September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, special commission meeting, final budget.
Motion.
Your motion?
Second.
You have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none. Item four is done. Item five, please.
Item five, public comments.
Anyone public comments? Going once, going twice, sold, none. At this time, I'd like to take item eleven A out of order, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item eleven on their new business agenda items. Item eleven A, presentation of a proclamation honoring Major David Valencia of the West Miami Police Department in recognition of his distinguished service and retirement.
I wasn't sure if you were here for a second. I looked over and you're right where you should be. Well, how do you guys, how you guys want to do this? You want to speak first or you guys want to speak first? Do the commission. Go ahead.
Yeah, if you want to start it off chief?
Or chief. Let's do it that way. Let's go with the chief. I think we have context, absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Just want to take a moment to recognize Major David Valencia for almost thirty years. He's been a cornerstone of this department in its history. David has served in just about every role you can imagine. And he's done it with professionalism, integrity, and a steady hand that has earned the respect of just about everybody in this agency. Along the way, he's been recognized many times. He's been Officer of the Quarter many, many times, Officer of the Year, Sergeant of the Year several times. And most recently, he was Employee of the Year when he became a captain. These awards just confirm that what we all already know is that David sets a very high standard. Beyond his service here at home, he's also proudly worn the uniform of the United States Navy and more recently, the United States Air Force, which we will not hold it against him. So he's basically continued his lifelong commitment to serving and protecting others. Major Valencia, I want to personally thank you for your leadership and dedication and the example you set every single day. We're lucky to have you and it's an honor to recognize you here tonight. We wish you all the best in your retirement and Godspeed with all your future endeavors. Back at you, sir.
Now, how do you want to handle it? And I keep pointing at you because you've taken the mantle from.
As a resident, you know, I'm so thankful that we have officers, you know, of the quality of character like Officer Valencia. And I didn't realize it's been thirty years. Time flies when you're having fun. As a resident of the City of West Miami for many, many years, I've been blessed by being protected, me and my family, from this police department. I can't say enough. I've always felt safe and so has my family. And that's one of the things that make a community thrive, having law and order. You know, without law and order, you can't have much of anything else. And as a city commissioner, you know, I can't say enough. I congratulate you. You deserve all the accolades and more. And as the chief said, Godspeed. Godspeed in your future endeavors. Thank you, Officer Valencia.
Major, I think there's a typo we need to correct. Thirty years, I'm not really sure how that's possible. Did you start at five? I'm not sure that that's accurate, but I'll take everybody else's word for it. I've only been the commission for a few months, but at every single turn, you've always been professional, always been there, respectful, and answered any questions I may have had. And I've had nothing but the best to say frankly of you and the department that you lead. So thank you for your service and I hope that you can enjoy your retirement.
Well, after all these wonderful words, I don't have too much to say. But Mr. Valencia, Mayor Valencia has been a symbol in the city for years. Every time something good happened in the police department, Valencia was there. When they catch a criminal, Valencia was there. When they have a problem, Valencia was there. And somebody told me Valencia is like a Mother Teresa. He's always doing something good. So Valencia, I congratulate you for your personality, for your hard work here, the way you handle with residents. People like you and I'm sorry that you go away. But anyway, it's time for you to enjoy life, but you have been always having a good life. But anyway, your wife wants you to retire too. Anyway, thank you for the service. And I and people I know, everybody wish you a very good retirement. And we're very sure that you will be keeping doing good things. Congratulations. Thank you for being here with us for many years.
I didn't read the part of the proclamation where we called them Mother Teresa. We shed that, add that in. I'll be honest with you, I haven't heard that about, I haven't heard that about you. Heard a lot of good things, but Mother Teresa is not one, that's a new one. And no, I mean, I appreciate so much your service to our community. We have a small department, but it's one that is respected throughout the state of Florida. I mean, I travel to Haci, I travel, I mean, everybody knows our department is respected and a lot of that comes from leadership of the department. So along with the chief, along with yourself, leading this department in the last few years especially, I really appreciate it. And I think our community really appreciates. So we're very excited for you to, you know, like Commissioner said, enjoy your life to the fullest now without the burden of having to protect us here. But I very much appreciate it and I look, you know, look forward to seeing you out there and, you know, thank you. Just thank you. Mr. Manager, you want to say anything or do you want to?
Well, I haven't come up here and I want to say that it's been an honor being the manager with Major Valencia here. He was one of the first people that welcomed me here and made me feel at home. I'm not going to feel too bad for him though because I've seen a couple of pictures of his place where he's going to and man, that sunset surely looks really nice. So thank you for your service. Really gratefully appreciate it.
Mayor, Commission, Manager, everybody that's here today, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the support that I've received over the years. It's been my honor and my absolute pleasure to serve in this community, to live in this community. I will be here for the next couple of months, living here, be working here for the next few weeks, and then I'm off to my next adventure. But once again, thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate everything you've done for me, like I said, especially the guys that are sitting here with me. Thank you because without you, I wouldn't have made it this far. So thank you.
This proclamation to Major David Valencia, whereas Major David Valencia has devoted his life to service to a distinguished career with the City of West Miami Police Department and the United States Air Forces. And whereas Major Valencia has began his career with the City of West Miami on October twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-seven. After twenty-eight years, he has exemplified professionalism, integrity, and leadership, serving every capacity within the department and earning respect of colleagues and the community in the office. Whereas his rise to the ranks stands in its estimates of dedication, commitment, and skill, given by the legacy of mentorship, trust, and service that will continue to inspire generations of workforce professionals. Whereas Major Valencia also proudly served in the United States Air Force and the United States Navy, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to duty, honor, country, balancing the full service, location, and security, distinction, and discipline. And whereas on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, Major Valencia will retire from the City of West Miami Police Department after twenty-eight years of honorable service, leaving behind enduring record of sacrifice, leadership, and public service. And whereas Mayor and City Commissioner of the City of West Miami wish to express their deepest gratitude to Major David Valencia for his steadfast service, loyalty, and contributions to the safety and well-being of our mayor. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón, Vice Mayor Ivan Chavez Jr., Commissioners Juan Blanés, Gustavo Cevallos, and the General Suarez do hereby recognize and honor David Valencia for his exemplary twenty-eight years of service in the City of West Miami and distinguished military service in the United States of America, and we extend our heartfelt appreciation and best wishes for him to retire.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, I wonder, we have a series of first readings. Let's get rid of those. Actually, I go back to the order agenda. I apologize.
Okay. Item six, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I'll make my report brief along with my usual manager's report that you all have a copy of and will be posted. I want to say that we started off the farmer's market this last Saturday. It'll be once a month. We also finished the artificial turf at the exercise equipment today at Cooper Park. Already gotten a few calls on that with people that really like the way that it looks. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Go ahead, go ahead.
One quick item, just if we can. I heard at least one resident, because we put turf on the swing sets.
The orders been put in, we're going to raise it up a couple of lengths.
Couple lengths. I figured it would be very easy to do, just.
Yes.
The swings?
The swings, because now that we raised it, some of the swings are kind of low, so we're raising it up a couple lengths.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other questions for the manager and his report?
No.
Next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Nothing unique, just a typical, you know, the city's leans sometimes are challenged by somebody else and so forth. Just routine, simple matters.
Nothing unique. That's what we like to hear. Any questions for the attorney? There's not really much in the report, just routine city business. I don't see the city engineer, Mr. Manager, but.
No, the city engineer is on vacation, but he has already been in contact with the subcontractor that's going to be doing some of the emergency work on our flooded areas, our problem areas. And that work should be commencing within a week to two weeks at most. We've been able to get some other things needed. We need a gas line hookup for the rec center that we just, they just sent in, the gas company just sent in the the plans and we've approved them, so that's moving forward as well. So and on top of that, he's working on a few other traffic concerns in certain areas of the city that we've been looking at. And he'll have that pretty much dialed in by the time he's back.
Okay. Any questions for the manager on engineering items?
No.
Nope.
None. Next item, please.
Item nine, committee reports.
Anyone for committee reports? Next item, please.
Item ten, unfinished business, none this evening.
Hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner.
We may report that the turkeys for the Thanksgiving are already approved by the Micosuke tribe. So we will have turkeys for our homebound and the dining and the comedor. And we will have turkeys for all our residents in the list.
In the senior center. Thank you. That's great. That's great news. Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Yes, eleven, on their own business agenda items. Item eleven B, this is a first reading in ordinance of the City of West Miami regarding retirement benefits. Repealing entitlement to health benefits which in addition to the retirement benefits of the Florida retirement system for retired City of West Miami personnel who have retired under the Florida retirement system pursuant to the city's participation in the Florida retirement system retirement, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
This is a first reading?
Yes.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
You have a second. Call the roll, please.
It's Commissioner Cevallos, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes and second reading and public hearing will be held in November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, first item C, first reading and ordinance of the mayor on the city commission of the City of West Miami relating to dogs in public parks. Permitting the city manager to waive the prohibition of dogs in public parks for specific events, providing for conflicts, codification, and an effective date.
And this is a first reading, but I do want to clarify something just for administration. This is a result of requests that I made just for, so the administration has the leeway to do things for the farmer's market. However, can we check before second reading that the prohibition on public parks wouldn't extend naturally to a dog park? I'm not asking for the question now, but I think our prohibition, the code is on our parks, which probably doesn't contemplate a dog park.
What we're looking at for a second read to exclude dog parks.
Right. And or add it into the ordinance that, so we can contemplate the reality that we're actually building dog parks, which weren't obviously in the city before or even a thing probably when that code was passed. So just, if it's possible, just make that a, if it's possible to add it in for second reading, if it's relevant, just a note so we don't have to do it twice.
Right. Good. The current code prohibits all parks, dogs in all parks. And we can certainly say with the exception of a park specifically designed.
Right. I think it would be a good time to probably, onto the subject, to just add it, to solve that little regulatory challenge that exists for, you know.
Because the manager's exception authority given here, which is logical, probably not intended for him to sign an order that exempts one park the entire, for every possible event. So we'll do what you suggest, Mayor.
Perfect. All right. This is our first reading today.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Suarez, have you voted? Commissioner Cevallos?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés? Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes and second reading and public hearing, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M.
All right. Next first reading.
Item D, first reading and ordinance of mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida relating to parks and recreation department establishing and amending previous park fees, schedule, and rates for services, membership charges, and rental rates, adopting the established and amended park fees, schedule, and providing an effective date.
First reading?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
A second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Cevallos?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes, second reading and public hearing, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. Next item, item E, resolution of the mayor on city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida relating to grants authorizing retroactively to September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, the city manager to sign the required interlocal agreement between Miami-Dade County and the City of West Miami for the provision of on-demand services and providing an effective date.
Mr. Manager, again, I know you've mentioned, we spoke about this item. This has nothing to do with the vendor, right? This is just about the access to the funds and dispersing them?
Mayor, no, this has nothing to do with the vendor. This is all about our agreement with CITT and the half penny sales tax for our portion of the grant to provide on-demand services only.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the manager on this item?
No, this is the new rate.
This is item E. This is item E. This is just the authorization to sign the interlocal, the county.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have, I heard a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Blanés, second by Commissioner Suarez.
Yes, Commissioner Cevallos, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Next item, please.
Item F, a resolution of the mayor on the city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to designate a new primary banking institutions for the city to renew our line of credit to transfer and consolidate the city's operating research and investment accounts into said institutions, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manager?
This is just to give, Mayor, this is just to give us the leeway to be able to move our banking and use other banking institutions other than the ones that we have. It's just giving us the authorizations to do that. It's not adding, it's not increasing anything. It's just giving me the flexibility to move our monies from one institution to another.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Cevallos?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item G, a resolution of the mayor on the city commission of the City of West Miami regarding implementation of a joint use agreement with the Miami-Dade School Board, provided that, providing that fences and cameras required to be installed at Silvania High Elementary School to implement the joint use agreement between the school board and the City of West Miami will be installed by the school board, which will be reimbursed by the city pursuant to the joint use agreement, providing for an effective date.
So this item is the last step for us to access the joint use agreement with Silvania High Elementary so we can start using that space. Well, the residents can start using that space as essentially a new park. As part of that agreement, we had to provide for the installation of cameras and internal fences to fence off the the school from the park area. While we probably could have done this work a little cheaper as part of our agreement with the school board, we have to use their procurement. So I think getting this done for the residents is well worth the, you know, well, it's required anyways.
Mayor, yeah, and the school board has their own distinct procurement procedures and they all have their also their own building department, building official, and their own unique code. So therefore, you have to use their vendors. And this is for us to be able to put up, for them to put up thirteen cameras and add fencing along certain areas to ensure that their campus is secure on weekends when we're using it.
Yeah, the important thing is obviously working together to collectively make sure that there's, the safety remains intact and is actually improved as a result of this agreement. Does anyone have questions for the management on this item?
Just one quick one.
Yes.
The school board will install.
Mm-hmm. School board will install.
Just one quick question. We're only on the hook for the initial installation, ongoing maintenance and operation of the cameras and everything will fall to the board?
We're only on the hook for the initial installation and for the fencing that we're putting in.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
You have a second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Commissioner Cevallos?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Does anyone need to pull anything from consent? There's one item. All right. Can I motion on the consent?
Motion.
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
You have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Hearing none. Good of the order. Anyone for good of the order? This is the time where we announce the events again. I think we have some changes to Halloween.
To everyone. Great farmer's market last Saturday.
The next events will be, oh, boy. And Rebecca's not here. This Friday, we have a movie night. It's Hispanics Heritage Movie Night. That's followed by, it'll be announced shortly, the unveiling of a new art piece for the Paseo Art Walk and followed by Halloween, which will be a two-day event, October the thirtieth and the, oh, and National Night Out. I'm sorry. When is that? The fifteenth of October at five-thirty is National Night Out, followed by Halloween, which is a two-night event, the thirtieth and the thirty-first. The thirtieth is only residents only.
And then that will include the haunted houses, right, that were very popular?
Yes, that include the haunted houses.
All right. Anyone else for good of the order? To echo Commissioner Cevallos, the farmer's market was very nice. To echo Commissioner Cevallos, the farmer's market was very nice, continued to attract, you know, better and better vendors. The people, I think, really enjoyed it, and I think are looking forward to, you know, it continued continuously better as the weather gets continuously better. So with that, there's nothing left on this agenda. This meeting is adjourned.